The Board is prepared. It is now after 6:00. This is the day and time set for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Welcome to our guests. If I could please have everybody rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Thank you very much, Administration. Roll call, please.
All right. Durante.
Present.
Fokes.
Present.
Hobbs.
Present.
Hopkins.
Present.
Richards.
Present.
Rounds.
Present.
Statchow.
Present.
Suokas.
Present.
Repport.
Present.
Everyone is present.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Motion is in order.
So moved.
Recognizing Suokas, second.
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 Recognizing Hopkins, sorry, Darrell Rounds. Motion, second. Any objection? Hearing, none. The meetings are, the meeting minutes are approved. Now is the time on our agenda where we have time allotted for citizens' commentary. If anybody is needing an agenda, they're usually available at the podium. If you have any comments on our agenda items themselves, the appropriate time to comment on those is when the items come up for discussion and normal business. This is for items that are not on the agenda that you would like to call to our attention. Anybody on my left? Seeing none. Anybody on my right? Seeing none. Thank you very much. We'll now go on to our action items, and we'll start with case number 2270. Proposed site plan approval for retail development at 35833 Ford Road, southwest corner of Ford Road and Linville. Petitioner Ahmad Ibrahim. Is Ahmad in the gallery?
Well, we'll be represented.
Is represented. Very good, then. Administration, can you please tell us a little bit about this case?
Yes, thanks, Chairman. Property here is a little over 22,000 square feet. It's undeveloped, outlined in yellow on your screen. Currently zoned CB3, that's our general commercial business district. It's within the Ford Road overlay district, which has additional zoning and bulk requirements to force design to look more in nature and character like a downtown building or a building you'd find in a downtown area. The petitioner tonight is requesting site plan approval to develop a 10,000-square-foot retail plaza that is anchored by a medical office. So about 30 percent of the retail plaza will contain a medical office. If I remember correctly, the representative can correct me, this is primarily for his son to be able to bring in some sort of medical office into town. Property to the north is zoned CB1, low-intensity commercial business district. It's developed by liquor store, I believe Scotty's Liquor. He is an individual or business owner that had some concerns that gave me a call during early stages of this proposal. Properties to the south are zoned R5, single-family residential, and are developed by single-family dwellings. Properties to the east, I'm sorry, property to the east is zoned CB4, vehicle service, and is currently undeveloped. Property to the west is zoned CB1, low-intensity commercial business district, and that's the location of El Mariachi Mexican Restaurant. The 2018 Westland master plan future land use designation for this site is city center. And moving on to some of the site design criteria, site access is provided by a single curb cut off of Linville Street. It's a full-service driveway. One second here. Over here. The building fronts up to Ford Road as required by the Ford Road overlay district. The site requires 28 off-street parking spaces. The proposal provides exactly 28 off-street parking spaces. The exterior building materials are a combination of aluminum paneling, CMU block, and some limestone. Elevation is up on the screen and in your packet. The site contains screening and landscaping along both Ford Road and Linville Street, compliant with the zoning ordinance requirement. There's a six-foot-tall masonry wall proposed in the southern, along the southern property line to screen the residential uses on the south, adjacent to the south. The zoning ordinance also requires a six-foot-wide landscape buffer in addition to that screening wall, and the site proposes one of those as well with some evergreens and shrubs back here. Site lighting is proposed and provided in accordance with zoning ordinance requirements, which limits or restricts lighting at one-foot candle at the property line. There's a dumpster enclosure at the back here, which engineering and fire have approved and signed off with in terms of the turning radius for the truck. All the bulk requirements, including setbacks and building height, are also being complied with. So the administration and planning department recommend approval of this site plan. I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Administration. Is the petitioner in the audience? Please rise to the podium and be recognized. Can you tell us your name and your association with the proposal?
Hi, my name is Hassan Darwish. I'm one of the designers for the proposed project.
You have the authority to speak for the petitioner?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Do you have anything to add to the presentation from the administration?
No, I'm really just here to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. I'm going to ask you to find a seat right near the podium. This is not a public hearing, a special, a special land use or a public hearing. However, we usually conduct these the same way anyways.
Sure.
So I'm going to ask the audience if they have anything to say, and then we'll bring you back up, okay?
Absolutely. Sure. Thank you.
Is there anybody in the audience to my left that would like to speak on this matter? Anybody in the audience to my right? All right, well, let's have you back right back up. I will open it up to the commission. Commissioners, is there anybody to my right that would like to? I see recognizing DeAnastha.
Okay. Yes, hi. Good evening. Through the chair to administration, I see that there's only two handicap locations. Now, what is our criteria for that size of lot and 28 parking spaces? Will that be sufficient for our particular code?
The building official, Roger, that works in our department, reviewed and signed off on this, and he specifically checks for ADA parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anything additional?
No, that should do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on my right wish, or sorry, left wish to speak? Anybody additionally on my right? I can't tell my right from my left today. Recognizing Ruby Richards.
Outside of the pharmacy, what other types of retail stores do you see going into the plaza?
We're planning on general retail, but discuss clothing stores with the owners. So they will be primarily clothing stores along with the medical offices.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Anybody on my left? Anybody on my right? Is there a motion? Recognizing Ruby Richards for a motion.
I move to send case number 2270, proposed site plan approval for retail development at 35833 Ford Road, southwest corner of Ford Road and Linville, to City Council with recommendation for approval contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Recognizing motion by Ruby Richards, support by Sam Durante. Roll call, please.
Okay. This is a roll call vote to approve case number 2270. Durante.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
Suokas.
Yes.
Repport.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your recommendation has been approved. You'll go before the City Council, and if you need any additional information for next steps, you can contact the administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
Moving on to case number 1532E, Land Division approval for Griffith Veterinary Hospital. Is the petitioner in the room? Seeing the petitioner. Administration, can you please tell us a little bit about the proposal here?
Yes, thanks, Chairman. The petitioner here tonight is seeking approval to split the property into three parcels. Currently, all three of those parcels that you see up on the screen are combined into one. The proposed parcels will all comply with the minimum zoning requirements after their split for their respective zoning districts, including the required setbacks for the veterinary hospital building that was recently built. The three, parcel A will contain the Griffith Veterinary Hospital. That's the red outlined parcel. It's currently split-zoned, CB3, general commercial business. That's where the Griffith Veterinary Hospital is. And CB1, low-intensity commercial business, that's where this former vet building used to exist. During the development of the veterinary hospital, all these parcels were combined into one, and there was a decision recently to split them again, and I'll share why in just a moment. Parcel B, that's the yellow parcel, will be vacant and will be held for the development of a single-family dwelling. Parcel B is zoned R5, single-family residential. Parcel C is the blue outlined parcel that's being proposed, and it is zoned the same R5 single-family residential, and the petitioner wants to create this parcel for the purpose of single-family development. The administration and planning department are recommending approval of this petition.
Thank you very much. Petitioner, do you have anything that you would like to add to the presentation of the administration?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Walter Pichak. I am the general contractor, builders and owners of that building. So what we did, we basically split it up. So when we purchased it, it was a one big lot. We have two residential lots to the south, which will be building homes around. So basically, this works out for the best. We put it together with your administration and like to get approval.
Thank you very much. Once again, it does not look like we have any special cases on our agenda today. However, we do always want to hear from our citizenry. If I can have you take a quick seat, just in case we have somebody that wants to speak. Anybody on my left wish to speak on this matter? Anybody on my right? Okay, if you can come back up. Sorry for the inconvenience. We'll open it up to the commission. I believe Sam wanted to have a few words.
This has nothing to do with your petition here, but I have a concern about ADA compliance at the building, which you're not. And I was wondering why.
Only thing I can say is this site has been engineered, you know, by our civil engineer put together for parking and handicap parking, and it was presented to the city, and it was approved, and that's how we pursued it.
Right. But it's not there. The way we approved it is not there. There were supposed to be two handicap spots closest to the door, and they're not there.
I know we have two handicap spots on the east side of the parking lot. That's where they were plotted originally by the civil engineer, and that's where we placed them.
On the east side of the building?
Yes, sir.
But the entrance is on the west side of the building.
Only thing I can tell you is we pursue it from the standpoint, when we get the engineers putting it together and for the approval, and that's how we pursued it.
But it's not the way it's supposed to be. You're supposed to have ADA compliance with handicap parking as close to the door as possible. Must be, and you're not there. I just want to know why you didn't do it.
Again, we, I'm a general contractor, and we basically build buildings per the documents we get. The documents were presented to the city. They were approved by your engineering department or whoever does engineering and all the other --
They were approved with two --
They were approved, and that's how we pursued it.
And it was approved with two handicap parking up near the door.
Exactly where they're at.
No, no. Not in behind the building, in front of the building, by the front door, on the west side of the building.
Right.
You got a ramp.
Only thing I --
Commissioner, I understand you have a level of passion about this, but you've made the man aware of your concern.
Okay.
And this should not become a back and forth.
Okay. I just want you to check into it.
I'll check into it. The only thing I can say is we pursued it according to the law, and what was approved, and that's how it is on site.
If, I recognize that you are not the petitioner. You are representing the petitioner. Is that correct?
I am the petitioner.
You are the petitioner.
Yes, sir.
Are you also the owner of the building?
Yes, and a general contractor.
So please just be aware and note that there is a potential concern that the parking, that the handicap parking is not as convenient as it should be or could be.
Very well. What I'll do is I'll definitely look into it.
And that's all we can actually ask of you.
Yeah, and what I'll do is I'll look into it, and I'll be in touch with your planning department and the building department.
Thank you so much.
And we'll go from there.
Thank you so much for your attention.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
If we can get back to the matter at hand, though, I'll attempt to pull this back out of the tracks. Is that okay?
Yes.
Fantastic. Is there anybody on my left that would like to speak to the petitioner? Anybody on my right besides Sam?
No.
Do you have something on the actual matter?
Yeah.
Okay, please continue.
Building there is my vet, and you guys do a good job there, and I look forward to doing more business with you.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate that. And that being said, I just want to thank particularly Mr. Ayub from the planning department and Nicole, forgive me, I forgot your last name, your planning department, which was truly a pleasure to work with, very approachable, very helpful, and we work in many communities. And just want to thank you for your time and effort that you put in our behalf, and you're helpful. You save us a lot of time. And also, by the same token, Mr. Dave Riley, your billing director, very experienced, a very knowledgeable individual, very approachable. It was a pleasure to work with him. So, and I look forward to working in Westland. I know I spoke with Mr. Ayub if there was any other opportunities, and I will definitely stay in touch, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to hear.
Anybody additionally on my right? Seeing none. I did have a question, which I usually just simply ask. I note that there, with any rezoning, or sorry, re-dividing of properties, there is a concern of land-locking in individual pieces. And I'm assuming that the two parcels to the, if the word aerial at the top is representative of the north, it would be to the east of the yellow and the blue properties. Are they adequately associated with an artery that would give people access to those plots?
The two residential properties being created in yellow and blue have direct access to Carlson.
Fantastic. It's a legal thing.
True.
With that, a motion is in order. Recognizing Sam Durante for the motion.
Make a motion that we play, send case number 1532E, Land Division approval for Griffin Vet, to the City Council for approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Recognizing Sam for the motion and Deborah Fox for the second. Roll call, please.
This is a roll call vote to recommend approval of case number 1532E. Durante.
Yes.
Fokes.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Statchow.
Yes.
Suokas.
Yes.
Repport.
Yes. Once again, please see the administration for next steps, and your next step should be the City Council for approval, and congratulations. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. It was a pleasure working in Westland, and the only thing I can say is Happy New Year. Look forward to being back again.
Take care.
Thanks for taking good care of our pets.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to case number 1646B, site plan approval for proposed mosque addition. Is the petitioner in the gallery? Is the petitioner in the gallery? Mr. Ayub, is the petitioner present?
Yes.
Oh, he is. Okay. Mr. Ayub?
Yes. Sure. Thank you. The subject property here is located on the north side of Warren, just west of Inkster. The property is currently split-zoned, CB3, general commercial business district, and the little parking lot over here is zoned R5, single-family residential. That's just to make sure there's no development there, just to protect the residential to the north. The site is developed by a 30, approximately 3,400-square-foot mosque. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct a 750-square-foot addition. This addition, to my knowledge, is to be used for dining space during the month of Ramadan. You can see the proposed area of the addition here outlined in red and on your site plan as well. Property to the north is zoned R5, single-family residential, developed by single-family dwellings. Property to the south is vacant in the city of Garden City. Property to the west is zoned CB3, general commercial business, and developed by a retail plaza. And property to the east, zoned CB4, and developed with an auto repair shop. The master plan future land use designation for this site is neighborhood commercial/office services. Some of the site design analysis, really, there's not a whole lot being changed here with the exception of the addition. Site access will remain as is. There's currently two existing full-service driveways at Warren Road and one existing full-service driveway at Deering Street. The site contains 57 off-street parking spaces. The addition is for dining space, as mentioned earlier. The way the zoning ordinance is written, religious institutions are only required to provide parking for their prayer areas or pews or other spaces similar to that. And dining spaces, office spaces, and other general-use spaces do not require any additional parking. The proposed addition will be constructed primarily using brick that matches the existing elevation that is up on your screen. Again, the, since I have this aerial or the street view up, the addition will be in this area here, essentially kind of creating a full building here, a full building elevation without that cut in the building right there at the front. The bulk requirements, the front setback required is 25 feet, so there is a variance needed there since they're going up right to the property line. The rear setback is being complied with, 20 feet. And the height, this is another situation where we have a height that is required to be the equal distance to the nearest property line, the nearest property being, as I just mentioned, the front property line. So there's a variance needed there for the building height, which is 11 feet. The administration and planning department recommend approval of this petition, subject to the variances being granted by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Administration. Petitioner, do you have anything to add?
First of all, good evening. It's a pleasure meeting every one of you. Honestly --
If you could please speak up, we're having trouble hearing you.
Okay. I'm sorry. I appreciate everyone for showing up today. Thank you, Mohammed, for speaking. What I wanted to add honestly was that when we first did the drawings for the space, it was supposed to be a canopy or an enclosed patio. That's what we asked for, and the civil engineer did the drawings as an enclosed patio. I came and met with the building department, and they told us because of the footing, it can be called a enclosed patio. I spoke to Mohammed and the building department. We told them that the purpose of this is so that on, you know, it's carpeted area mostly, and if we, we don't want to, you know, dirty the carpet. In a couple of months, our holy month comes around, and we have, you know, supper almost every night. So we did the drawing as an enclosed patio, just like they do in, like the hookah lounges. There was supposed to be glass, you know, it has nothing to do with the occupancy or anything extra. But anyways, the city, you know, actually said it can be called an enclosed patio, rather it has to be an addition to the center. So that's why it's called an addition. We had to go back and change the drawings so that it fits the requirements of the 42-inch cement footings that the, you know, the building department asked for. So I know that it might not really matter if it's called a patio or if it's called an addition, but in reality, you know, it is an enclosed patio. But, you know, I just wanted that to be honestly, you know, clear. Whatever it is called, you know, ultimately, you know, we're trying to do it. But in the beginning, when we first drew it, submitted it to the city, and sat with the building department, it was supposed to be a patio.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you could please have a seat, I'm going to open it up to the community. Is, let's see, Mr. Chapel in the audience? Mr. Chapel?
He's my neighbor, so I don't know who you're talking about. He's not here right now.
He's not here right now? We do have some communications from Mr. Chapel. He had shared some concerns with us. I'm sure everybody on the board has read it. I'm not sure if you're aware of the letter, and you did speak to him. I'm aware that the administration has some factual clarifications to make on that before we get into any additional community commentary. Perhaps you can clarify some of those concerns?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Mr. Chapel raised several concerns in his email, and I'd be happy to summarize those on the record and respond. He was concerned about the size of the addition. He had thought it was a 33 percent addition in size. It is a 22 percent increase in the floor area of the building. Not saying it's small, not saying it's big, but just saying that it's 22 percent and not 33 percent. Mr. Chapel was also concerned with the addition displacing existing parking, and this space of the property where the addition is proposed is not taking over any existing parking spaces. There was another question about the occupancy load of the building. Our building official and I sat down, and the occupancy load -- Our building official and I sat down, and the occupancy load that was determined per the code is 405. Let's see here. There was a concern raised that there must be additional parking provided for this addition. And while usually 99% of the cases that are brought forward to the city and to you and the City Council do require additional parking, religious institutions, as I mentioned earlier, that are proposing additions that are not prayer-related, do not require additional parking areas. Thank you.
And just for clarification, the requirement for parking is an exception for religious institutions and not a logistical requirement. They might functionally need more parking places, but it's not a legal requirement. Is that clear?
In this case, in all religious institutions, yes. There are other exemptions in the code for other uses, but for this specific case, that's correct.
Understood. I will open it up to citizens' comments. Anybody on my right wish to speak on this matter? The neighbor? If you could please rise to the podium and identify yourself?
Hi, I'm William McMahan. I live on Cardwell Street. From my hab is with the parking, especially every Friday. They have, people show up and they park on both sides of the streets. They park to a point where I can't even get into my driveway at times. That creates an issue where people can't get down the street. The parking is really tight. I don't even know if a fire truck could get down the street at that point. So that's my concern, is the parking overload that's already happening that we're seeing. And it's not just my street, it's like Deering's seeing the same stuff and Floral's seeing the same stuff. It's both sides of the street, it's not just one side. If it was one side of the street, it'd be one thing. But they're taking up both sides of the street. I can't get into my parking lot or I can't get in my driveway at times, and it just creates a bunch of issues for the residents there on those streets.
Thank you very much for raising your concern. I just want to make a quick mention that one of the major functions of this body is to provide a forum where community concerns are aired and heard, because the ears of, the mouths are directly in the same room with the ears that need to hear. And with that, is there anybody on my left that wishes to speak on this matter? It's a lot of gallery that doesn't want to speak on the matter. Anybody additionally on my right? Ma'am, sir? Recognizing the gentleman. Gentlemen, can you please rise to the podium and be recognized?
How are you? I own the Strip Plaza.
Sir, your name, please?
William Bunzluck.
Hi, William.
How are you?
Well, you live in Westland?
No, I do not. I own the plaza to the west of it.
Okay, great. Do you have anything that you'd like to make us aware of?
The biggest concern is the parking. I have to have somebody or myself stand out there every Friday from 12:30 till 2 o'clock approximately and ask them not to park, because I have tenants that want to move out, because it's the middle of the day. And we have a restaurant there, we have the party store there, and they want to come in and out, and they park it up to where I have to stand there. And I get in confrontations, which I don't want to do. I ask them not to. I know this gentleman's asked them not to. And now, if you're going to add more, call it what you want, there's going to be more visitors at more times. I'm going to have to figure out how I can control my parking lot for my tenants and their customers. And that's a big issue. They park across the sidewalk. Now, you're going to bring that out to the front of the sidewalk. I have pictures of them parking right up to the building, blocking the sidewalk. I could show you right now. That's a huge concern. They block the crosswalks, they double park, and they park in my lot. And I have to stand there, cold, rain, everything. And I don't feel I should have to do that. It's too quick. If you try to call the police, which I have, it's too, they're done and gone before they even get there. I've tried blocking the cars, which I can legally do, and I have done it. And then they call the police on me. And I don't want this to go back and forth like this. I am just asking, this parking really needs to be addressed. I don't think it's fair for me, in every climate, weather, snow, cold, rain, to have to stand there and say, "I'm sorry, you can't park here." Why can't you park here? Because I'm limited on spots myself for my plaza. I can't say, "You can park here, but you can't. You can park here, but you can't." That's not fair to anyone. I'm not going to pick and choose. I'm just saying, I need them for my customers and my tenants. That's a huge issue.
Thank you very much. Returning, I'm sorry?
What was his name?
William.
What was your name?
My name?
Yes, sir.
William Bunzluck.
William.
Anybody additionally on my left? Ma'am, on my right, did you want to speak? Husband's good enough. Only one, you got permission. Please rise to the podium and be recognized.
My name is Neil Durkin. I live on Deering Street. And on Fridays, it's almost impossible. There is no room whatsoever for emergency. We had the street repaved this last summer, and even the city workers were complaining about it. And they said, "We should do something about it." And we sit there and we go, "We do." They block driveways, they block fire hydrants. It just, I work from home now, so it makes it even a little easier for me, but it's still almost impossible. Last time for the holiday, the, what was it? The recycle bins weren't picked up. We had to call all week because trucks couldn't get down the street. They got on either side of us and they left ours. So we called and complained, and it's just Friday parking is a nightmare. You try to be nice, you try to talk to people, and you get flipped off half the time. You know, it's just not a good situation. If there's open parking, park. Don't block driveways, don't block mailboxes, don't block... One weekend, somebody pulled up my neighbor's street. This was during the time when the street was under construction. They pulled up the neighbor's driveway across the street. They were out to work. Nobody came out and complained, but that's not right. It's just not right. And basically, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Once again, are there anybody that would like to speak on the left? I see a couple now. Gentlemen with the beard, and then we'll get to you. Please rise to the podium and be recognized. Come on, hurry up, hurry up.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. My name is Munir Lahwal. I don't live in Westland, but I prepared the drawings and the site plan. I know the parking lot, it's a concern for the neighbors. I'm here, actually, to discuss the variances. But as Mr. Ayub mentioned, this addition will be only for, we can say like it's a kind of enclosed area to have, you know, futur and shuhur in Ramadan, which is in a couple of months. Maybe this is not my point to talk about, maybe the Imam or someone else, you know, using the masjid more than me. But yes, so this building, it's not going to be for prayer area. It's not adding any extra occupants, you know, occupants to the building. The same people will come, either this building was built or will be built or not. So I'm here just to discuss the variances, and this is my point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone additionally on my right? Seeing none, gentlemen? If I can have you rise to the podium and be recognized, please?
Hi, gentlemen, I'm sorry to come like that, because my name is Mohammed Mahyoubi. I'm living in Dearborn Heights. I'm coming always to the masjid in Westland. And we part here for the neighbor, because I know people like the Imam, he talks to him a lot of time, to don't stop over there for the parking lot. And he did this every Friday. He do his best, but it happened. So this area, whatever you got to build, is not like my friend, he said, like it's not for prayer, it's only for Ramadan, like for people like make like a dinner or lunch Ramadan or shuhur. That's he gotta be about 4 o'clock in the morning shuhur. And there's dinner sometime when you make a small dinner, that's about 7 o'clock in the afternoon. So he not gotta be additional like for prayer, and no people is gonna come this time to do it like. So, and we part here for the neighbor again. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody additionally on my right? Anybody additionally on my left? Gentlemen in the back? Please rise to the podium and be recognized.
Hello, my name is Hassan Baze. I don't live in Westland, but my father and I own a pharmacy in Westland. And he's been a pharmacist in the community for 25 years now. I'm also a regular member at the mosque. You know, I hear the routine speech every Fri-, you know, really, at least every month on Fridays from the Imam of the problems that are associated with parking on the neighbors' areas. And, you know, I will say that he's done everything that he can to make sure that we understand that as participants at the mosque and as people who join the Friday prayer. And I by no means mean to discredit any of the concerns by the people who've voiced them here, present today. And I would be willing, absolutely, and I think we all would, to have a conversation as to what a solution might be. Like I will, you know, pay for barriers, cones, whatever we would need to, to make sure that we cover any parts that they want to make sure that we don't park on. And I think that we should have that conversation. But I think that that conversation should be done separately, and we should plan for that. Because really, what we're discussing here today, these are two very mutually exclusive things. The addition that's being discussed here is an addition that in no way affects the parking that's going to happen in the communities, and it in no way even adds to an area that people who are joining into the mosque would even be able to park to begin with. We're really comparing apples to oranges here. And again, I mean that to not discredit in any way the concerns that have been discussed today. I hate hearing that. And to hear that people are being contentious and flipping off people who have these concerns, like those aren't the people at the mosque that I know. They would never treat or just speak like that with anybody there. So that causes even more concern for me and makes me even more want to have those conversations with them. And like I said, if, you know, I will do whatever I can to pay for barriers, to make sure that any of that stuff is addressed. But let's not let that distract us from what we're here to discuss today, which is an addition to the mosque that will keep many people from having to stand outside in the rain, in the cold, and, you know, so that we can help to facilitate additional activities in a place that has really been incredibly important to me and has been actually just a huge change in my life. Like, I was, to call myself a contributing member of society prior to me joining this mosque would be probably not a thing that I could do. But, you know, it's made a massive improvement to me and has really made me a better member of my community. And I would love to have more people to be able to join in those types of activities. So, thank you.
Again, your name, sir?
Hassan Baze.
Hassan?
Hassan, H-A-S-S-A-N.
Anybody additionally on my left? Anybody additionally on my right? Sir? Imam, can I please have you return back to the podium?
Can I make a statement, please?
That's one of the main reasons why we would return you to the podium. If you'd like to comment on any of the things that you've heard?
Yes. First and foremost, I truly appreciate all of our neighbors. When we started this project and opened our doors on December 1st of 2014, this was a condemned sports bar that even Tim, and I have a good relationship with Tim. Tim spoke to me, you know, bikers, very loud, nothing against bikers. They had the dumpster next to his fence that they kept throwing meat. And there was a rat problem, there was beer bottles in the backyard. We cleaned up all of that. We have spent more than $700,000 on the building. Brand-new parking lot, brand-new bricking, everything from the inside, brand-new windows, doors, bathrooms, everything we did. And all of this is to facilitate a place where we are welcoming to everyone, regardless of faith. And we're very proud of doing social work. We're very proud of engaging with everyone. And as our prophet told us to treat others the way we want to be treated, I absolutely understand what our neighbors are going through. What I want them to know is I would only accept honestly what pleases them, because it's going to please me. And that is, I would not accept anyone to come block my mailbox, block my driveway, park over the curb. This is unacceptable. The thing is, and I spoke to Tim about this, and I know they might think, "How can all these people come on Friday?" What is kind of different is we have about 40 to 50 members, that's it. We have 57 parking spots. We have more than enough. We never have an issue. We never ever have an issue of parking except on that half an hour. We have service from 1:15 to 1:40, 25 minutes. That's why, as William said, he's a good neighbor, and, you know, everything he said is true. If the neighbors were to call the cops and say, "Hey, we have a parking situation." It's not an emergency. The cops show up, you know, at 3 o'clock saying, "Hey, there's nothing going on here." What William said and the neighbor said is absolutely true. So we have about 40 to 50 members, less than 50 members. How all these people come? You know, in Islam, people come to, they're not bound to one mosque or one center. If you live in Canton, if you live somewhere far, you don't have to go all the way to the mosque that you're a member at or a center that you're a member at. You just Google the closest to you and you show up. All these brothers who show up on Friday and make us all look bad are non-members. Now, they don't need the Imam to tell them, "You can't block the fire hydrant. You shouldn't park in front of the stop sign. You can't have your car, the bumper of your car in the neighbor's driveway." They don't have to have me say to them, "You can't block the mailbox" where, you know, the mail carrier cannot deliver if you are blocking it, which for the past few years, I have, ever since, you know, everything went back to normal after COVID, I've been religiously saying this every Friday, standing before people at service. Islam is not, "We just come here and pray and we leave." We have to act like citizens of this beautiful city and do what is always right. Brothers want to tell me that only Imam, it's 10, 15 minutes. I'm in there quick and out. It still is wrong. So the past week, we have met with the community, we have made a volunteer group. You know, we have been putting stickers on cars who are blocking, those sticky stickers that are very tough. Remember when I used to go to Henry Ford? One time I parked illegally, and I had that orange sticker for, you know, like a month there. So I know exactly, you know, that these are, you know, are a little annoying. And, you know, I called the cops, I spoke to Sergeant John Gotti a couple of times, told him, "Please, come make money. Come make some money. If you see anyone parking illegally, park, you know, give them a ticket." And he told me, you know, "I come there and speak to the people, they're nice and they move it." I said, "Yeah, but you guys don't do it weekly." And I told him, "I know for a fact." And this is, I look at it, you know, the city of Westland, honestly, ever since we came here, it's been more than 10 years, nothing but, you know, you guys are very tender and soft and very nice. I really appreciate that. And I say that not because of the situation we're in. We never had any problem with any project that we ever wanted to do. And I know for a fact, if we were in Dearborn, Dearborn Heights, this issue would never happen, in a sense that our guys down there like to make money, and it's not wrong. If you're doing something wrong, you know, maybe you won't learn, but, you know, the hard way. If you park in front of any of those centers on Friday in Dearborn or in Dearborn Heights, immediately they will ticket you, immediately. So even though we have parking bigger than they do, centers that are three, four, five times bigger than us, I'll just... I'll just give you example of the one on Prospect called Al Salam Islamic Center. The parking, we have bigger parking than they do. The occupancy over there is maybe six, seven times bigger than we do. But how are they managing it? You know, the city of Dearborn Police Department, they don't play games over there. And I'm not saying that the city of Westside, they're very nice. I speak, you know, maybe we have to, you know, visit them again. It's been a while, honestly. But, you know, I told them, you know, help us out, you know, just like they do on churches on Sunday. And our service is literally 20 to 25 minutes. I told them, I wish we could have the same service that I, you know, I live in Dearborn Heights off of, you know, Ann Arbor Trail and Joy Road. There's a church on the corner of Joy Road and Inkster. And, you know, they have sometimes the county helping them out on Sundays. And, you know, they have a big church, they have parking, but it's not enough, I guess. And they always have cops, you know, from either the city of Dearborn Heights or the county that assist and help. And I spoke to, you know, Sergeant, I told him, we really appreciate it, you know. I told him, come make some money, you know. But what, another thing I want to bring to your attention is, Mr. You mentioned the land across the street from us in the city of Garden City. That land we purchased late 2019. That land is ours. And the plan is to make it into a parking structure. We spoke to the city of Garden City. We went to them and spoke to them and saw what the requirements are. And they're also, just like you guys, very nice. They told us straightforward, you know, a small 200-square-foot building that is to be, you know, done. And the rest can be, you know, done as a parking lot. And, you know, our, Mr. Ahwal is our engineer who does all of the drawings of the the center, who just spoke a little bit ago. And so this is, you know, honestly, you know, one of our plans of going forward with. Again, I absolutely, you know, have nothing but respect for our neighbors. I appreciate them showing up and voicing, you know, their concerns. We are here as a team. They're going nowhere. We don't, we're not going anywhere. We don't want them to feel or to have any resentment towards us or to feel that, you know, you know, somehow, you know, we don't respect them. Honestly, we we hear their concerns. We wanna, you know, put our hands in their hands and work together in solving this issue. And I, and as I mentioned to you that, you know, we have, you know, volunteering group that has been working since, we've had them previously. But, you know, since last two weeks, we've had them, you know, be more consistent. And, you know, we want ultimately what's, you know, you know, what is right to deal with our neighbors. And, you know, I appreciate you guys as well. And thank you very much. I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Imam. If I can please have you stay up there while I open up the, okay. Sir, if you could please stay at the podium. This is where we have the, the board speak to you. So anybody on my right wish to speak to the petitioner, recognizing Mr. Hopkins?
Greetings. I I agree with Mr. Hassan that these are two different separate problems or concerns that we have. Mr. Williams out protecting his business and he's being a parking lot attendant. Might I suggest that you do the same?
Absolutely.
If you put somebody out there saying, you can't park here, you can't park here, eventually I would think that would catch on.
Yes, and that's true.
But I do agree that this is two separate things. And I'm for you putting this area onto your building because by the site plans, it doesn't affect your parking spots at all. So this is definitely two different issues. But I would recommend that you do your best to get along with the citizens.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And try to come to a resolution.
Absolutely.
Especially with Mr. Williams here, who's just trying to earn a living by having his business succeed.
Correct.
And if if his spots are being taken over and his customers have nowhere to park, that doesn't seem very fair.
It is not.
At the same token, to say that you can't park on the streets isn't very fair either. So it, from what I understand is you have travelers coming. There, if you don't have a parking person, your travelers will never ever understand what you're trying to put through. I believe that you truly need to have your own parking attendant. And I think after a while, this will solve the problem and make your neighbors quite happier that they can get in and out of their driveways and feel safer in case there was a fire to the where the fire hydrants aren't blocked. Because that's, I mean, that's important to you as well.
Absolutely.
What if a fire happens at your building? We need to be able to put it out as soon as possible.
Correct.
So I hope that you that you you take that into consideration. But you do have my support on putting the the extra area.
I promise that we will, we will not let this go on. I promise.
And I believe you.
I promise we will not let this go on. If this was my house, if this was, if I lived on Deering or on Cardwell or any other block and someone was doing this to me, and I'll tell you what, last year during our service in Ramadan, I went home so I can come back late, our service is late. When I got home, and I live in Dearborn Heights, two houses from me, a good neighbor, he had, you know, invited a lot of people. The block was full. I could not get in my driveway because of a big Ram truck. So I had to, and I beeped, but everyone is having supper and no one is gonna listen to me. I had to drive over the lawn of my my next-door neighbor. So I know how it is and I know it's not fair and I promise that this will not keep going on. I promise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I do apologize to the board. I meant to, well, before I opened it up to the board, I wanted to say it's it's fairly obvious and the the board as a as a body does recognize that there is a parking issue and it should be addressed. The members of the the board, please, if you do insist on mentioning the the parking issue and a solution, please keep those commentaries as limited as possible because they do not relate to the to the to the proposal as it stands. Thank you very much. And with that, is there anybody to my left that wishes to speak? Recognizing David Swokis.
Yes, good evening.
Good evening.
I just wanna say thank you to the neighbors and to you, Imam, just, I can see that everybody wants to work together and get along because, you know, when you grow a neighborhood and especially, you know, when you when you're adding to something for a religious service, it builds community.
It does.
Because I I could tell you, I'm a member of the Hellenic Cultural Center. And I remember when we built the church, geez, I think it's been at least 30 years. And prior to that, we built the hall and we had our service there. A lot of the neighbors were very concerned about us putting it there. But, you know, you work those things out, you communicate. And obviously, I could see that you're communicating, the neighbors are communicating. And I'm comfortable that everyone's listening. And like our chairman said, I think it's it's a good idea to have your, have a parking attendant. I know a lot of churches and I believe the mosque on Ford Road, they have like a parking ministry that they direct people in and out. So I think that's a good recommendation there. But I'll definitely be supporting that because I'm for building the community. And, you know, it's important for people to be able to break bread together after a service, especially during high holy days.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Anybody to my to my right, recognizing Diana Stachow.
Yes, hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to say even to the citizens, it's good. This is, this is what it's all about, coming out, voicing your opinion so that they really realize what your position is and how you feel. And I'm sure they appreciate it as well. Aside from that, though, because I'm not unfamiliar, how long on Fridays, what are your times that you do have your services?
The service is.
Or whatever, you know, what the correct term is.
Yeah, Friday service, the Friday sermon starts at 1:15 and ends at 1:40, sometimes before that.
So just for that sort of time, right?
25 minutes, correct, correct.
Okay. And is it that you also have, say, a reception after or the congregation does stay and attend in lengthy, you know, additional time?
People rush to leave to go to work. It's like the lunch break. So within 10 minutes, everything is evaporates.
Okay.
So.
All right. Well, that's good. And it sounds as though this enclosure is really gonna serve the purpose for you. I think that I'm definitely in favor of that as well. That is a excellent spot for it. It's not taking up any additional parking. So, you know, that that's a good thing. The fact that you have given your word that, and the other gentleman as well, that you will be attending to this matter, I think that that should really take, you know, take care of things. And in fact, if it doesn't come around, you know, you can come back again. You can come to the city council or whatever it is, but I'm sure that it'll be taken care of. And and I think that, I think that's, you know, I wish you good luck on it and I feel that that'll definitely serve as a good addition for you. So I would definitely be in favor of that as well.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just one moment. Anybody to my left, recognizing Daryl Rounds.
Through the chair to the administration, what's the occupancy load of the building again? And are the amount of parking spaces that are existing, are they in line with the with the occupancy load?
Occupancy load is 405. I don't have the other answer for you.
I was through the chair to the administration.
Because it goes through the chair, I can answer if I got the information.
Okay, occupancy load is 405.
I counted the parking spaces and when he said 57, I was kinda excited because I got my, I can count right. So there's 57 spaces.
Correct.
So I'm just, I just wanted to, like, for the record, like, make sure that there's enough parking, parking for the occupancy load of the building.
This building was approved before my time with the existing layout of the parking and its existing layout as you see in your packet.
Okay. So we got that, we got that straight. Another question that I had, were there any concerns raised with public safety of a chronic issue associated with this situation?
When we receive a proposal for any type of development or generally any proposal that goes before the planning commission and city council, as you know, but for the record, we send it out to a variety of reviewers, primarily department heads, including police and fire. We did not receive any specific complaints or concerns about this mosque or this site plan. Generally, from working at city hall, I am aware of some parking concerns generally, but not as it relates to this proposal.
Okay, thank you. And I guess finally, to the Imam, I wanna commend my fellow commissioner, Mr. Hopkins, on his recommendation for you to provide parking lot or parking attendance so that you can help address the situation. Because it seems as if, like, you might have a small assembly or congregation. But because of, I guess, the availability of your mosque on Fridays, you get a large influx and.
I'll tell you, I'm sorry to cut you off. One of the main reasons why they they come to our center is, first of all, I'm bilingual. Many of the Imams don't speak English. And secondly, a lot of times the service is like an hour. So we cramp it for them. So, you know, I want them to, you know, the the sermon, I just want it to be a reminder, you know, 15 minutes. We pray for five, six minutes and that's it. So that's the reason why, you know, all of this, you know, happens within this half an hour or so. And I know it's not the fault of anyone else, you know. But I promise we will not keep this going on and that, you know, we will do everything we can to make sure that our neighbors are absolutely satisfied with, you know. And I know those who live, been living with us or before us and seen how, you know, we come in peace and leave in peace. And it's that half hour on Friday that it bothers me before it bothers them, honestly. So we're gonna work on that.
And I appreciate your comment about the city of Westland being able to make some money, as you said.
Yeah, I'm for that.
So, like, whether it be an appeal through city council or a conversation directly with the police department, I continue, I would encourage you to continue.
I will, I will visit.
And I also encourage the the neighbors to do the same thing as well.
Yeah.
That concludes my comments.
And then when you call the police, they never show up.
How do they don't show up?
Please, from the gallery, I understand. Anybody additionally on my left? Anybody additionally on my right, recognizing Ruby Richards?
I just wanna kinda piggyback everybody else and applaud Mr. Williams for being such a humble, humble neighbor because he could have been one of those neighbors that put up a couple of signs, park here and your car get towed.
He is.
And that would have been another issue, so.
I really respect him. He's a, he's a highly respected. And by the way, we have a good relationship. He can vouch for that.
Yeah, we do. And he has, and I know he does ask them not to park.
Okay.
It's, we gotta hear some.
But hats off to you.
Thank you, Ruby. Anybody additionally on the right? Anybody additionally on the left? Seeing none, I'm gonna take just a, just a moment. I normally try to avoid it. So I first wanna extend appreciation to the to the neighbors. I understand that this is a very frustrating situation. You also understand that there's, legally speaking, there's very little that can actually be done because they do have religious exemptions. And I I do appreciate the the patience that you've been showing and the and the community, honestly, that you've been showing, being as patient as you have. That being said, I wanna offer an additional thought for a for a solution, at least temporary. It sounds like you're, like you're already working on a more permanent solution with a, with an, with an adjacent lot. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in the meantime, perhaps a shuttle and an off-site parking area might might solve the problem as well if if the parking attendant concept is is not going to solve the issue.
You know, when we did the the parking lot in 2017, we had to shut down for a couple of months. We did a brand-new parking lot. And our friends at the the restaurant on the corner of Warren and Inkster. The Lucas, yes, The Lucas. Jim over there allowed us to park. So that could be a good idea, you know.
Well, thank you very much. And once again, I I do hope that the word of an Imam that he is working on it is good for the for the neighbors. But we do appreciate the frustration that you have and and we hear you and we see you. That being said, a motion is in order. Recognizing David Swokis for that motion.
I move. We take case number 1646. It's not, it's not special. Site plan approval for a proposed mosque addition at 27758 Warren Road, southeast corner of Warren and Deering. Forwarded to the city council with a recommendation approval, subject to the condition for the front yard setback variance granted by the zoning board as well as the height variance and including all other departmental requirements and recommendations.
Support.
Motion by Swokis, support by Hopkins. Roll call, please.
Okay, this is a roll call vote to approve case number 1646B. Duranti.
Yes.
Folks.
Yes.
Hobbs.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Richards.
Yes.
Rounds.
Yes.
Stachow.
Yes.
Swokis.
Yes.
Rap report.
Yes.
Thank you.
So the, we're sending this to the city council with a recommendation for approval. You can see the the administration for next steps. Thank you very much for your time, Imam. Thank you, community, for your input.
God bless. Appreciate you guys.
God bless. Appreciate you guys. And we hope you have a positive, a positive outcome. And please feel free to attend the, the city council meeting and make your, make your concerns heard there as well. Moving on to item number four, consideration of 2024 Planning Commission annual report. I assume that the, that the board has had an opportunity to look over the report. If anybody needs a moment, speak now. Hearing none, a motion for, for approval is in order.
So moved.
Sorry, did that come from Sam first? Motion by, by Sam Durante, support by David Swokas, was that?
Yes.
Support by David Swokas. Anybody, if there are no objections? Hearing none, motion passes. Moving on to item number five, election of officers. This being the first meeting of the new year. This is the, the meeting at which we elect our officers. At this time, I will open up nominations for the chair.
I nominate David Rappaport for chair.
Support.
Motion for, for nomination of David Rappaport has been made and seconded. Are there additional nominations? Additional nominations, third time.
Motion we close nominations.
This, I think there's a rule of three. I have to ask three times. But then I'll, I'll recognize you for that motion. Thank you very much, Sam. Additional nominations? Hearing none, recognizing the, the motion by Sam to close. Objections? No objections. Motions are closed. Are there any objections to, to the, to the selection of David Rappaport as the chair by affirmation?
I move that we, we elect David Rappaport by acclamation as chair of zoning board of appeals for the 25, 2025 calendar year.
Not on the zoning board of appeals.
Not anymore, I'm not.
Planning commission moves.
Very good, then.
Brings.
Thank you for the motion and support. Was that Darrell Rounds? Thank you very much. Any objections? Hearing none. David Rappaport is elected. Thank you very much for your, for your trust.
Congratulations.
Yay, me. The nominations now open for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Swokas.
Vice chair nomination for Swokas. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded. Are there any additional nominations?
I nominate myself.
Is there a second for the nomination of Ruby Richards?
Second.
Recognizing Ruby Richards for the motion for self-nomination and Sam Durante for the, for the second. Are there additional nominations? Additional nominations? Additional nominations? Motion to close nominations is in order.
Like a motion we called nomination.
Recognizing Darrell Rounds and for the motion and Sam Durante for the second. Any objections? Hearing none, motions are closed. And now we have a very thing to do. So because of the, the two nominations, I will be placing both names on three-by-five cards. One of these cards will be, will be selected to go first. If that person is nominated, we will not go on to the second card. If that person is not nominated, then we will go on to the second card. And if nobody is nominated, then we have a whole number, another thing we have to deal with. The administration, do we have something secure that we can choose these out of, like a box or a hat or something while I write their names? Mr. Swokas, is that correctly your name?
Yeah, it's correct.
Mr. Statchow has a hat. Neat.
Birthday boy.
Madam Richards, is that your name?
Yes.
Very good. Please, both candidates, observe the, both, both nominating three-by-five cards and see that they are identical, except for the fact that your names are individually on them.
I'm comfortable with it.
Let's get a box.
Yep.
I'm going to drop this in the Good Thinking Hamilton Beach box. Very official looking.
Shake it up.
Yeah, but it says, that mean we're toast?
Hey, Nicole, let's get you involved here, too. You're going to pull the thing.
Why don't you stand in front of the podium?
All right, I'm going to close my eyes.
Close your eyes.
Come on, Vanna.
That's the wrong one.
What does it say? Richards.
Okay, we will be, we'll be discussing and voting on Ruby Richards first for, for the position of vice chair. I'll open the, the floor for discussion. Anybody on my right for discussion? Anybody on my left for discussion? Very good, then. Administration, roll call vote, please. This is to elect Ruby Richards for the position of vice chair for the, for the 2025 term.
I need a drink.
Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
No.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
No.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Statchow?
Yes.
Swokas?
No.
Rappaport?
Yes.
We have six yeses, three no's.
Ruby Richards has been elected as the vice chair for the, for the 2025 term. Thank you very much. We should go on to the secretary.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Hobbs.
Commissioner Hobbs has been nominated and seconded by Ruby Richards. Are there any additional, are there any additional nominations?
Yes. I'd like to nominate David Swokas, please.
David Swok, is there a second for David Swokas?
I'll second that.
I have a second for David Swokas as, as the, the secretary. Are there any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? Any additional nominations? Well, we're going to get to use our, our little box again.
I have a Swokas, so I'll put this one here.
Oh, I could save some, some of my ink. Just want to make sure that Ms. Hobbs has a, an opportunity to confirm that this is, this is your name. It's on a similar thing to the.
Is that good enough for everyone? Close your eyes.
You put a possum in there for it.
Okay, Swokas.
Okay. The, the nomination is for David Swokas as secretary. Is there any discussion on the left? Any discussion on the right? Recognizing Darrell Rounds.
This question is for Jessica. Are you interested in running for this position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good question.
Any additional on the, on the left? Any additional on the right?
Let me ask the same question of David. Are you interested in running for this position?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, then. Are there any additional comments? I see.
No.
No, okay, the finger was up, just, just for, for a finger being.
Yes, just.
Nope, okay. Roll call vote, please. The, this is a roll call vote to elect David Swokas, the secretary for the 2025 term. She is running. And if David, David Swokas is not elected, we'll be running an election for her.
Okay, Swokas. This is for Swokas to be secretary. Durante?
No.
Folks?
No.
Hobbs?
No.
Hopkins?
No.
Richards?
No.
Rounds?
No.
Statchow?
Yes.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, six no, three yes.
Thank you. We are now moving on to the, to the election of Ms. Hobbs for the position of secretary for the 2025 term. I believe that there's no need to open up discussion again. So we'll go directly to roll call.
Okay, Durante?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Hobbs?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Rounds?
Yes.
Statchow?
No.
Swokas?
Yes.
Rappaport?
I believe that is the, that is the election of Ms. Hobbs. Congratulations. We're going to try to have some work for you. The next item, the last item on the agenda is to confirm or reappoint the ZBA liaison. This is not currently a, an elect, an officer position. I think it should be, which is another reason why I'd like to review our bylaws. However, this is just a matter of reaffirming that, number one, you're willing to do the job, and number two, that we're satisfied that you do it well for us. First of all, I guess it would be most appropriate, would you like to be reappointed?
Yes, and I, I also was elected as vice chair for the ZBA as well this last meeting.
Well, that is a great way to lock yourself in there, isn't it? Well, fantastic. We're going to do this vote by, by, if there are no objections, the, the reappointment, the reaffirmation of the, oh, oh, yeah, yeah. You don't get a say in this. We're going to do the reappointment by affirmation. If there are no objections.
Do you need a motion?
I do not need a motion. No objections? Then I'll, well, I'll reaffirm the, the appointment of Diana Statchow to the ZBA. Congratulations. Thank you for doing what you do for us. Let's get on to commissioners' comments. Try to make them as short as possible. Starting He's got prepared statements.
No. Where'd he go? Right here. I just wanted to make an announcement that the Ladies of Hope has a chili and soup event here in city hall on January 28th from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM. Wonderful chili and soup. All come out.
Thank you very much, Sam. Diana Statchow?
Yes. Thank you once again for reconfirming my position for liaison to the ZBA. And I will definitely give the reports necessary for each of the meetings. Thank you once again.
Mr. Rounds?
Greetings, everybody. Just want to wish everybody a happy new year. At least I know the way both, in a special. And I want to congratulate the new appointees in their office positions. And I want to congratulate David on his retirement and thank him for his ser, his service to his country. And thank you for your service as secretary in the last year. And I would say go Bears, but it feels like the Super Bowl. But I'm almost a Lions fan. I'm almost a Lions fan. So as a Chicago native, that's why I'm going to say that. But it's just, it's been a pleasure serving on a thankful opportunity.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hopkins?
Happy New Year to everyone. I wanted to also wish a happy birthday is in order. Because you don't want to remember it, we still do. Happy birthday. And congratulations to everybody on their, on their positions. That's all I have.
Ms. Richards?
Happy New Year. Happy New Year to all. And I want to thank, I'm thankful that I got reelected. I know I have not been in this position long, but where will my experience come from if not given a chance? And I appreciate you guys giving me that chance. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. And congratulations to the other appointees as well.
I'll try to be sick more often so that you can actually try to run a meeting or two. Mr. Swokas? Mr. Swokas has nothing. Ms. Folks?
Just like to congratulate our new office holders. And I'm looking forward to working with everyone in this upcoming year. And happy belated New Year.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hobbs?
Wanted to wish everyone a happy new year and say thank you for your vote of confidence. I will make sure to bring a pen to the meetings.
Anything from the administration?
Happy birthday, Mr. Statchow. That's it.
Anything from Nicole?
Happy New Year, everyone. See you tonight. Hope you see everybody at another place on the 20th at 9:00 AM.
Here.
Here, right here.
I'll be at the table.
Maybe, oh.
Thank you, Nicole, for, for assisting us with, with the ballot grabbing. I, I can't say that I'm a huge fan of the way that we have to do that, but it is approximately the neatest way to do the, to do the elections without doing a completely separate, secret ballot.
It's a very fair way.
Concept that would take an extraordinary amount of time. It's very, our process is matching the, the one for the, for the city council. I wanted to take a moment to congratulate each of the, the new appointees. We, we trust you, and we'd like to see you succeed and do your jobs. For those of you who are, who were serving in your positions, I wanted to take a moment to thank you for your service. I'll start with my vice chair from last year, Ruby Richards. I very much appreciated your assistance in organizing. And of course, most of the heavy lifting was done by the administration, and specifically that woman over there. However, Ruby was very helpful in getting the, the training session organized for all of us. So thank you very much for that and for being very supportive of my time as chair. For our outgoing secretary, thank you very much, David, number one. I love to hear about your exploits for our, for our government. It's, your, your life is remarkable, practically unbelievable. It, and you should be very proud of yourself for, for what you've accomplished for us. As far as our board is concerned, I've appreciate, I've personally appreciated and benefited from your, from your thoughts on how we can, how we can improve what we do, your passion for what for what we do, and I certainly hope that we see more from you over, over time.
Oh, definitely you will.
With the, with your participation in our commission. With that.
Absolutely.
Oh, you, you, over there. Ms. Statchow, thank you so much for your, for your efforts on our behalf with the ZBA. I know that crew over there, they're, they're, they're a wonderful crew of people, and I'm glad you're there taking care of them the same, the same way that I did. So, and I, I know you're bringing your own thing to there, and I'm so happy that you're, that you're, that you're connecting with that, with that body and making sure that there's a bridge between what we do and what they do. I very much appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
With that, Happy New Year to everybody, and I'm looking forward to a, to an excellent 2025. Are you raising your hand because you would like to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Fantastic. I have an adjournment and a support. Those in favor, please indicate so. Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Sam can stay.
Who supported?
We are, we are in recess. Thank you very much, everybody.